What people do if they take the thing.
Contract things, okay.
Yeah, I want to say, you know.
I'm already ready.
Thank you for that.
And today.
Okay. I'm good with all the wording on all this stuff. I've studied it and I'm done with it.
Good.
Carry on.
Good evening. Want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners December 21st meeting to order?
Yeah.
Ask Commissioner Gailes to open us with the invocation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Bow with me, please, people. Lord of all and Creator of all things, we thank you for this day and the blessings upon us. In this time, you came to a dark world. You were hunted by an evil king. Wisemen brought you gifts. Yet you brought the greatest gift of all, the gift of forgiveness and life everlasting. Preserve and protect our first responders and public safety family. Protect our military field. Bless our people and keep your hand upon them. Come dwell with us as we consider the matters before us. May your perfect plan manifest itself. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Who stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the December 7th meeting in your packet. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
If I ever raise your right hand. And then we're moving the fiscal audit out of the agenda. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'll conduct, we'll do that at eighty in January.
Super. Again, welcome to the December 21st commission meeting. Just some of you folks that are here from sale, we don't have all the deputies here for you. Well, I walked in the room, I thought, you know, what are people gonna think? Actually, we're here on a real positive note and in the agenda, but our Sheriff Clay Whittle was named the 2021 Sheriff of the Year by the Georgia Sheriff's Association. Just to give you a little background, Sheriff Whittle was elected in 1995. That's pushing 26 years, Sheriff. He strived to produce the highest level of law enforcement. In the end of the first year, he had already taken the Columbia County Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff's Office, excuse me, through accreditation, which we were the first Sheriff's Office in the state to be accredited. So he did that within his first year. But what impresses me the most about Sheriff Whittle is that if you think at 26 years, in 2020, we had less crime reported than we did in 1995. Now, I want you to think about that for just a second. We've almost doubled in population, but crime has gone down, or better yet, has stayed consistent and gone down. And that's large, large in part due to what you've done for this county, how you've served the citizens and these great men and women that are here with you tonight. So I just appreciate everybody giving another round of applause.
Chairman, can I add to that a little bit? I'd personally like to thank Sheriff Whittle for all he's done for Columbia County and his leadership and his staff that he has and he's put together and what they do. And these guys every day out there for what they do for the citizens of Columbia County is just unbelievable. And as we go around, you know, we go to these commission classes and so forth. And we're in these classes and people start talking. And everybody don't have the relationship with their sheriffs that we have. And Sheriff, I want to thank you again, you and your staff for what you do. And when we have a need, we sit down, we work it out, we come together and whatever we need to do, we get there. And I appreciate each and every one of y'all, especially you, big man.
Absolutely. Anyone in uniform want to make a comment? Now's the chance. Cameras are rolling. He can get you later, but he can't get you now. Again, we thank you for everything you do, Columbia County. I heard somebody say once, it doesn't matter how good the schools are. If you don't feel safe, then the community's not going to grow. And attributed to what you do every day, Sheriff Whittle and your team. So thank you very much. And sir, I had nothing to do with these folks showing up. So don't have me pulled over 15 times on the way home. One other bit of recognition that we'd like to share with everyone tonight. And it was really a good year. Our county manager, Scott Johnson, was, received the Pillars of Excellence Award from the Georgia City County, excuse me, the Georgia City County Managers Association. And it's a lifetime achievement award for excellence in your job. What I like the most about Scott is that he understands that this is basically a conservative community. And our focus is to control the spending, control the growth as much as we can, but just enhance quality of life. And this just exemplifies everything you've done, Scott. And so again, want to thank you, thank you so, so much for what you've been the county manager now 12 years?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years.
Seems like 50.
Last three years have been a real pain. Right, I get it, yeah. But we just really appreciate you and the work that you do and what Sheriff Whittle have done for this county is just, it's beyond. We can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't mean to steal the show, Mr. Chairman, but I want to add to that also. Mr. Johnson, he puts an expectation up for everybody. And we relay an expectation to you. And you make sure that those expectations are met. And all of your staff, they just fall right in behind you. And your leadership is just, is second to none. And we really thank you for what you have done for this community. All the awards, it shows. We've got Engineers of the Year, either this year or last year, or two or three, our Water Department. It just shows all throughout this county. We are in a blessed place, people. And we just can't take it for granted. It don't just happen. These guys work hard for it, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to add, you know, Scott and the sheriff are both very humble about these awards and not loving the fact that we're all sitting here staring at them tonight. But we are a very well-run county and it's not because of the five of us sitting here. It's because of the staff. And Scott always gives credit to his team. And we appreciate your leadership and keeping our, we have how many employees now?
I'm 1,400.
1,400. And they all look up to you for leadership. And we're all very appreciative of what you do. And certainly not bashing our sister counties, but not every municipality is as well-run as this one. And we are, we're a light on the hill. A lot of folks call here, ask us how we do it, want to do it like us, call Scott, want advice and guidance. And we are so proud and so grateful for everything you do for us. And we couldn't do what we do if you didn't do as good a job. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll further embarrass you, sir. And let's you know that we-
Notice how they weren't jumping on the sheriff to embarrass him?
Well, our two points of recognition are signs of the excellence that we expect and that we obtain in this county. And thank you, Sheriff, for everything that you do. As we go around to meetings with other commissioners, you know, if it was a Sandlot game, everybody would pick Scott first because you want him to be on your team because you're going to win with him. He, we are the envy of so many counties and communities out there. And I learned a word from Scott and it's intentional. Nothing happens by accident. It comes from expectation. And I thank you for being intentional in everything that you do and giving us the excellence. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the newest commissioner. I'd like to take time to thank Scott. Great job, did an excellent job and even helped a new guy when he comes in. And we got a great sheriff in this community. And I'm very proud to live in this community and to tell the world this is where we live. Thank you. Thank you.
On with the meeting. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. It's been through the necessary committees and received enough votes to be placed on this agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Legal matters? Mr. Skinner?
Yes. Resolution 2149, authorizing the approval solely for the purpose of a section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 of the issuance of 13 million maximum aggregate principal amount of revenue refunding bonds in one or more series, federal taxable and/or tax exempt, Series 2021 Bonds by the Development Authority of Columbia County for the School for Arts and Views Learnings sale. I make a motion to approve the resolution number 2149.
I second that motion.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries? And I did have folks who signed up that want to speak. Want to speak for this, it will come at the end of the agenda under community. One second. You. Oh, please. Let me say, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you.
There goes our public, sir.
Oh goodness.
Merry Christmas.
They went to camera.
Bear with us, this does not happen often. Commissioners, I believe Commissioner Skinner, you still have the floor?
Yes, sir. This is item J81, file RZ210905. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at Tax Map 082, parcel 526, to revise the site layout and uses for this parcel, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Report, with the modification of condition number five to read, no amplified music will be permitted outside and all businesses on the site shall have customers seated by 11:00 PM. Condition number six is modified to provide that no drive-through shall be permitted. And condition number eight, the agreement between Westlake Property Owners Association and the applicant shall be signed and provided prior to or at the October 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting is hereby deleted.
Second.
What you have here, sir, is a redesign of the site plan, new site layout that has been working on, they've been working on for quite a while now. Mr. Sterling, his staff have been working with the Westlake Property Owners Association as long with the developer. This is part of the POA covenants for Westlake. Therefore, Westlake's POA had a lot to say about this development. Condition number eight that was just removed by Commissioner Skinner was a condition that they had to have an agreement by October 19th. Obviously, we're past that date. We did receive word they have reached an agreement, information. The drive-through was removed, as mentioned in that. And seating the customers by 11:00, mentioned also, and no amplified music outside. But you have intimate questions about this. Mr. Sterling, Mr. Butler will be happy to answer any question you have. They've been knee-deep in this for several months now.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries?
Item J1A2.
These items, if I may interrupt, these items deal with fencing along Fury's Ferry Road that has gone up after the clearing took place. Folks put fences up that didn't necessarily meet with code. And so the commission pushed this to this meeting for a resolution.
File VA21-10-03. I make a motion to deny the variance and allow the property owner 180 days to bring the fence to compliance.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries?
Item J1A3, file VA211007. I make a motion to deny the variance and allow the property owner 180 days to bring the fence to compliance.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries?
Item 4, A4. I make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance number 2108, amending the official code of Columbia County, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Construction, Article 6, Naming and Renaming of the Roads, Structures and Facilities, and allowing placement of memorials, monuments, sculptures, park benches, and works of art on county-owned designated properties, Section 18-239. Memorials, monuments, sculptures, park benches, and work of art, collectively works of art, application in Chapter 62, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, Recreation Board, Section 20, excuse me, 6242. Back it.
Senator, you want to?
Sure. This is the second and final reading of the revision of the ordinance that signs a review of applications or proposals for public works of art, park bench dedications to the-
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries?
Okay, I'm still on Resolution 21-43. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 21-43 to establish a light, a streetlight district for Crawford Creek South, Phase 8B, and to authorize Georgia Power to proceed with the installation per their proposal.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries? On to Commissioner Malir.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Gold Cross for ambulance, emergency, and non-emergency medical services, beginning January 1st, 2022, with this agreement superseding all previous agreements, contracts, and addendums, and the authorization of a budget transfer of $75,000 from our contingency into the EMS budget and $500,000 of CARES Act funding to purchase three quick-response vehicles, which will be strategically placed throughout the county and used to enhance response time in patient care.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries? Going back to Commissioner Skinner, there are.
Yes, sir. Item J2B1, file RZ2112-01. I make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice the request for a rezoning from S1 Special to P1 Professional for Tax Map 051, parcel 003B, a 2.09 plus or minus acre portion of the 17.07 plus or minus acre tract located at 2029 William F. Parkway.
Second.
This was a request to basically split zone this property, zone S1 for a school. And they were looking to zone part of it for professional space. Have requested for withdrawal.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries?
J2B2, file VA211202. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-98, list of lot and structural requirements for property located at Tax Map 082A, parcel 086, to reduce the building setback to 40 feet from the center line along Bellwood Drive, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission Report.
Back it.
This is the side of Jiffy Lube off of Bastion Road. They were asking for a variance for the setbacks on Bellwood Drive to allow the construction of additional building. Needs that area and the staff's okay with the request.
New Jiffy Lube or adding on to the old Jiffy Lube?
The new building for the existing business, a secondary building.
Oh, okay.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries?
Item J2B3, file VA211203. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-135, signs for the property located at Tax Map 028, parcel 027A, to increase the allowed size for, in height, of a proposed miscellaneous freestanding sign, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is a directional sign. They've submitted a site plan, I'm sorry, a sign plan to staff and it was approved. However, they're asking now for a variance for this sign. The sign that is allowed by code is approximately three foot tall and allows a three-square-foot sign on it. This sign does direct all the truck traffic to the second Amazon buildings. They're asking to go to six foot tall and 24, for 24 square feet. It does fit the area. Staff's okay with the request.
Doesn't block any, that line of sight, does it?
It does not. It is required to meet all the setbacks because of the size.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries? I know we've had, for the next three items, people request to speak. For Mike Murray? Please state your name and address for the record and take five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mike Murray. I live at 3501 Greenway Drive at the summit at Jones Creek. I'd like to share three brief points why I believe the proposal to put a liquor store, or multiple liquor stores, near the intersection of Fury's Ferry and Evans Delox will be bad for our community, especially at that location. I'd like to cite a 2018 Johns Hopkins Center for Public Health study that's, that found that for every 10% increase in alcohol outlet access from liquor stores and taverns resulted in a rise of violent crime of 4.2%. Specifically aggravated assault, robbery, and homicide. This was regardless of income levels. A 2020 study by Johns Hopkins, University of North Carolina, and Boston University, found that closing 20% of the liquor stores in Baltimore associated with a decrease of 51 homicides and $63.7 million. That would be a savings. A quote from the study is as follows, quote, "Researchers have consistently demonstrated the link between greater alcohol outlet density and higher rates of violent crimes in cities and suburban areas across the United States as well as abroad." The study also cites nine other studies confirming this research. So point number one, increasing liquor stores increases violent crimes. Decreasing liquor stores decreases violent crimes. This data is irrefutable. Point number two, if you were to put another liquor store in the area, the Fury's Ferry and Evans Delox intersection or nearby is one of the most ill-advised locations that you could choose. First, it is predominantly a residential area with some business. It is not a business area with some residential. It's also the crossroads for a lot of our highly, most highly vulnerable populations. Within a two-mile radius, we have one high school, two middle schools, and three elementary schools, six senior living centers, and five daycare centers. Third, this area has, already has no less than 12 liquor stores within a four-mile radius. The closest is 1.5 miles away, with three additional within two miles. So I would question, do we really need another liquor store in this area? Point three, the harmful societal benefits will likely far outweigh the potential revenue earned. Yes, the county will earn additional tax dollars if it goes ahead with this proposal. I'm in the tax business, I understand. But at what cost? If you are looking strictly in terms of dollars, the 2020 research cited calculated direct costs per homicide at $1.2 million in terms of criminal justice costs, victim costs, et cetera. What about even more importantly, the human costs? What about the many, what about the pain and the suffering? The additional worry, people going to the store, looking over their shoulder? Many of us collectively have invested millions in this community. I really enjoy and like what you said about the safety of this area. It is, it is a wonderful place to live. People are attracted to this area. Businesses come to this area. People come to pay taxes in this area because of the quality of life. Do we really want to risk this for a few short-term monetary gains? I have here a list of dozens, petitions of, from dozens of citizens against this proposal. If we had had more than four days and right before Christmas, we could have gotten many more times that. I also have a letter from a concerned citizen who could not be here that I'd like to present. Thank you.
You want to give to Scott?
Yeah, either way. Thank you.
Jack? Jack Long?
Thank you for letting me here. I represent applicant Man Sheev Enterprises. And I would like the commission to, got made a timeline. Y'all have already issued a liquor license to this company. And as a result of that, they have already started, wired property, paid for an architect, signed a building, gone through, they've had to work with the Water Department about a water line at Georgia Power Company. This particular license, problem was the license expired, this one, because of the problems he's had with the timetable in getting things constructed, especially in this time where we have a hard time finding contractors to do the work, getting supplies and things like this. So we're just asking for this license to be renewed in essence, reissued, and giving additional time in addition to the normal six-month period of time, based upon what he has done, what they have done to try to build this. I will pass out the copy. We have the first in line for a new license. We have had a, have an architect, Mr. Webb here, photograph, but I will hand out pictures of what will, what the, this particular store will look like. It's already been designed. In the back will be a liquor store, so there won't be views from Fury's Ferry. Now, I realize that some people say, well, if you have more liquor stores, you're going to have more violent crimes. Well, I just heard that because of the way the sheriff department is running this county, y'all have one of the lowest crime rates in the country. In fact, it's gone down, even though the population's gone up. And what I would ask you, you know, if we want to ban all liquor, I think that's been tried, it didn't work. I think if you're going to have these stores, they need to be well-run, decent location, and they need to enhance the community. And I would ask you to approve this liquor license and to give applicant more than the six-month period of time to complete this project, to be in there because of the problems we have with construction now. I have the architect and I have a representative of Man Sheev here. If the only questions are. Thank you very much.
Questions? Comments? Your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the request for an alcoholic beverage license for Man Sheev Enterprises LLC DBA, the liquor market.
Second. Second.
Questions? Phil, for item J2B5. Name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Sumrat Patel, 730 Mars Point, Evans, Georgia. I'm here today about my current alcohol application for liquor store. It is my understanding there is two other applicants, both applied two weeks after me, one of which being second attempt. My family and are part of this community and live a couple mile away from the location. It is important to us that this store represent the community by maintaining profile, professionalism, and friendly retail environment. It's also important to us that we offer something of value to our neighbor and surrounding area. I feel our application is different than other in a few regards. Most important, we are going to be standalone business. There are other applicant plan to multiple retail outlet that will adjust to their liquor store. For the member of our community who aren't comfortable with other liquor store, I would hope this would elevate some concern, because of those entering to our property will be there for one reason, and our experience with other store be far less like to have their children with them. Other reason why we feel our application make the most sense to our neighbor, which concern, is that we will not have liquor or alcoholic in our store name. Again, we are also raising our family here and understand that concern of some here. Our business will also be part of Columbia County 2035 Future Development Plan. We are confident that the tax revenue will provide, will only grow this community stronger. I do take pride in following the law put into place by Department of Revenue. The law will, the law help keep the industry competitive and safe. I have stuck to the rule and own and have no intent to of doing that practice, again for a loss of reason, but none more so than me being member of this community. It's our hope that being the first applicant, our track record at providing tax revenue while being profitable, our being standalone location and raising our family in the same zip code will help us secure this license. I thank you very much for your time.
Have you already, have you already purchased the property or is it under contract?
It's under contract, sir. That didn't, it's still on the contract. We got 90 days due diligence for that. It's like 0.86 acre, a small parcel, not on the Fury's Ferry.
Yes.
Evansdale Locker.
If you'd already purchased it or you just had it under contract pending the license?
Pending the license, because I've, I've been through this before. There was no point to.
Right.
Make a contract without getting the license.
Right. Did you answer my question?
Yes, sir. Anybody? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the residents of District 1 have spoken and it is strongly preferred that we not have another package store in that neighborhood area. And I respectfully ask my fellow commissioners to join me in denying that request.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to deny the request for an alcoholic beverage license for Prentice Patel.
Second. Any other discussion? Favor raise your right hand. Mr. Patel? Next, Mr. Patel. Sorry.
First, I would like to start off by giving these papers to you guys to read. My name is Sumrat Patel. I live at 1401 Palmetto Court, Martinez, Georgia, 3080, 30907. We've been working on this project for a little over a year now. We took the approach to meet with the planning department on this project before we went and applied for the license. We knew the site had some issues with it and by applying for the alcohol license, we knew we'd be holding it up for six months. That time was not feasible to do construction and open our site. Now that we've actually got our site approval by the city, by the planning department, we're able to start construction as soon as possible and we can have this site up, up and running within six months. We've been working with our architect who's local, CB Architect here in town, as well as Bozlauder, who's our civil engineer. The plans are in front of you guys. You guys have any questions about that? But we've been living here since 2006. We do, we've been in this community like the rest of the gentleman that spoke. We have other businesses and once again, we are part of this community. We love living here and, you know, we'd hope to get this license approved for the fact that we approached the county first the right way. And being able to get this license approved within six months, we're, we're able to open up within 180 days time period given. Any other questions?
Have you purchased the land or?
Yes, sir, we have purchased it.
Haven't approved site plan yet.
Yes, sir, we do. It's in front, it's a.
I'm just verifying.
Yes, sir.
So, you've been working on this project how long?
Uh, over a year now. Back in probably September 2020, we approached the county. You know, we wanted to make sure it was zoned right. We wanted to make sure that, that we were able to do what we wanted to do. And also, we're working with the planning department on the extra elevations and making sure that it, you know, it goes along with what the county is looking for. So, yes, but it's been, it's been over a year now, sir.
Question?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Again, the residents of District 1 have spoken and strongly prefer that we not have another package store in this neighborhood area, our neighborhood. And again, I respectfully ask that my fellow commissioners join me in denying this request also.
Comments? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the request for an alcoholic beverage license for APS Beverages LLC.
Second. Favor raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries forward to one. No request for review by committee. Public comments from anybody from Sale, hang around that want to.
Pam Lightsey, 113 Brittany Way, just wanted to say thank you very much the last couple weeks with communication back and forth and trying to answer any questions on behalf of Sale. We'll be able to move forward and obviously put the county on the map and continue, so in the example that we want to have school choice for our kids, our children here in Columbia County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Executive session, I know we have a few items which I believe we can deal with right here and now.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the employment contracts as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries? Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept the donation of property from Miriam Rickerson, Parcel 074G001 for the Crawford Creek Sewer Phase 2 Project.
Second.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries? Brings us to the end of our agenda. Next meeting is January the 4th, 6:30. Any other motions need to be made?
Mr. Chairman, Merry Christmas to everyone and I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All favor raise your right hand. We adjourn.